Good evening. I want to welcome everyone here to the regular city council meeting in Rancho Cordova. I'm going to ask our city clerk to call the meeting to order, please, and give a roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sander is absent but will be joining us shortly. And then Mayor McGarvey.
Here. Thank you. Now I ask the city clerk to announce the meeting video recording and playback schedules.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Uverse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Sunday, October 27th at 9:00 a.m. and Wednesday, October 30th at 6:00 p.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Officer Tracy Jacobs to lead us in the pledge and then I can say I invite the audience to remain standing. Don DeShong from River City Christian will then lead us in the invocation.
If y'all can please join me with the pledge. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please join me in prayer. Our heavenly Father, we ask for your blessings on our community. We're so grateful and thankful for our leaders that are here today, willing to serve. We pray for unity, for clear insight, for wisdom as our leaders tackle the issues at hand. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen. Okay, we're going to begin with presentations and I ask Stacy Delaney for the presentation of the Community Enhancement Fund Grants. I have the council go on down to welcome the people coming up.
If you guys can join Bob. So, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff and guests. I'm Stacy Delaney and I'm the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. As Bob mentioned, we are here tonight to present ceremonial checks to several of the organizations that receive grant funding through the city's Community Enhancement Fund. And the first check we're going to present tonight is for Blessings in a Backpack and their after-school food program. Blessings in a Backpack believes that no kid should worry about where their next meal is coming from. They provide single-serve food items and they send these items home with children. And with the help of the grant funding from the city, approximately 300 children will be given five to six meals and two snacks each Friday during the school year and will take these items home with them. Volunteer program coordinators Janice JD Davis and Ricky Davis are accepting the check for $15,000. Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
The second check this evening is for a school partnership program by Sacramento Theater Company. The Sacramento Theater Company organizes and teaches an after-school musical program at White Rock Elementary School. The program also engages parent and community participation through set-building days and creating props and costumes. The program culminates in a performance and there will be two, one on March 21st and then again on March 22nd. Program manager Francesca Sonoyama is accepting the check for $17,500. Maria, did you get it?
I did.
Thank you. The third check this evening is for Whisker Warriors Animal Defense Fund for the continuation of the spay, neuter, and vaccination program. Whisker Warriors offers and promotes spay and neuter services for dogs, cats, and domesticated rabbits of Rancho Cordova residents. Whisker Warriors also volunteer their time and participate in community events to share information about the program and to encourage responsible pet ownership. Last fiscal year alone, more than 700 animals were spayed and neutered as a result of this program. Executive Director Tara Colvin-Bach is here along with Sue Spicer, Patricia Kay, Charla McKenna, and Carol Rains, and they're accepting the check for $38,000. The next check is for Soilborne Farms and their school garden program as well as a new water line. So Soilborne Farms provides support, technical assistance, training, and expertise to local schools through their coordinated school garden program. They also receive grant funding to install a water line to help with fire protection at the 55-acre historic American River Ranch. Sean Harrison is here accepting the check for $125,400. And the last check this evening is being presented to Rebuilding Together Sacramento for their upcoming Spring Rebuild Day event. And Rebuilding Together Sacramento is committed to the safety and beautification of Rancho Cordova neighborhoods. They organize a rebuild event each April and this upcoming April, it will support the improvement of 12 to 15 homes. Program manager Molly Maris and board members Christine Grace and Jennifer Rubin are accepting the check for $150,000. And this concludes tonight's check presentations. Thank you.
Just got to say about the rebuilding day, which is going to be in the fall? No, in the spring, April. That it was really awesome to get to meet some folks from Habitat for Humanity this past year who thought that you guys were handling all of our needs when it came to rehabbing homes and renovating homes in Rancho Cordova. And so it's great that we're funding you and we're funding Habitat to do some of the same work, so really excited.
See you out there. Paul Simp, Tiffany.
Thank you.
That's one of the really nice things, you can see the money that the citizens give to each other. That's what the Measure H did. It's called the Community Enhancement Fund Grants and we've been doing so many wonderful things with it and it's all things that the people say, this is what we need the tax money spent on. And that's what we're doing. So, we're good on that. Okay. I'm kind of called on Rika Sass, Director of the Sacramento Public Library for the presentation celebrating family friends, national friends, excuse me, Rancho Cordova Library Week. You have the proclamation. Linda?
So, we're going to... Technology is great. Welcome, Rivka.
Thank you, Linda. I'm sorry, Councilmember Budge.
It's all right. Well, this is always a pleasure for me. There's no question that our libraries could not get along if it were not for the Friends Organizations. So this is really important that we take this opportunity every year to celebrate these guys, so.
I was going to take your picture while you were reading this.
No, it's all right. So this is a proclamation given in recognition of the Friends of the Sacramento Public Library for the National Friends of the Library Week, which just happens to be this week, as you all know. Whereas National Friends of the Library Week will be celebrated in communities throughout the country and in Sacramento City and Sacramento County and all of the cities and communities therein from October 20th to October 26th. And whereas in 2018, the Friends of the Sacramento Public Library generously gave the gift of time, providing more than 56,000 hours of volunteer service valued at $25.43 per hour, okay, for a total of $1,424 and, no, $1,424.80. And whereas the Friends of the Sacramento Public Library gave local libraries more than $300,000 to fund their programs, to buy books, to purchase new equipment, and to bring the community together. And of course, as we all know, at the Rancho Cordova Library, there are more programs during the month than there are days of the month. This is a remarkable statistic. Whereas the Friends of the Sacramento Public Library raised more than 56,000 in the 2019 Big Day of Giving to support the library's Book First program for first graders, providing children with books for their home libraries. And whereas the Friends of the Sacramento Public Library provided more than 2,200 boxes of books to more than 120 locations, including schools, hospice, dialysis centers, senior centers, charities, and faith-based groups, allowing people without access to libraries to have access to the books. And whereas the Friends of the Rancho Cordova Library work tirelessly to support the Rancho Cordova community. And whereas the Friends of the Sacramento Public Library represent the best in community engagement and support the library's mission to help our community discover, learn, and grow. And whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all on how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. And so therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby proclaim October 20th to the 26th as National Friends of the Library Week. And we thank you all and your colleagues in Rancho Cordova and everybody else who gives their time and talent for the library system to help make this library the most marvelous place, and it's free. And witness thereof, Bob signed it and he personally put his seal on this proclamation for you all, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. May I just say one thing? I just want to remind everyone out there, if you do not have a library card, please come get one. You'll be surprised at what you'll find at the library. How many of you have seen the Audible commercials about listening to those books? Forget Audible, you can get it for free at the library.
Actually, I thought you were going to say you had library cards in your pocket.
Well, forgot that. They want to visit the library anyway.
They do.
Garrett?
Come in, come in.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for all that you do for us and for the citizens of Rancho Cordova and the library. That was wonderful. Going on to the agenda, I am number six, public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council, if ready matter or not on the agenda, may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called to the podium by the mayor at the point of the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public cards? Comments?
I have four speaker cards. The first speaker is Robert Van Cleff. Following Robert will be Gloria Olson, Barbara Tomlin, and then following Barbara will be Helen Fredericks.
Good evening. The members of the Mobile Country Club who are gathered here today, please put your hands up, are here because they're looking for your help. Compared to the rent from November of 2017 to the new rents that go into effect December 1st, the past two years have seen an overall rent increase of 19% compared to the cost of living increase of 6.5%. Two HMO surveys, our homeowners association is in the middle of doing the second survey right now, show that the greater majority of the people living in our community meet the hub definition for financially burdened. In fact, over 40% of them are considered to be severely burdened. The recent rent increases have resulted in a major restriction on their ability to pay utilities, buy food and medicine, and just live a normal, happy life. I'm here to ask the council to direct city staff to study and report on available alternatives to help the people in all of these manufactured parks, such as adopting a space rent standardization ordinance, or working to implement the better solutions. In fact, I found out today that it is quite possible for the city to take over code enforcement. There's an actual, it's almost a letter that you can do. I sent it off to Stefan, the information on it, where you can take over code enforcement. So maybe some of the stuff that needs to be fixed can actually get fixed. But bottom line is I thank you for listening and I thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Gloria Olson.
Good evening. I'm just here to express my opinion about the financial hardship that this rent increase has had on me. I'm a senior citizen, a divorcee on a fixed income, and I'm on every financial aid program that they offer there as far as utilities and different things. But $50 a month is far too much for me to afford and it's just, it's a real hardship. So I just hope you will have some sympathy. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us your information, your ideas.
Next speaker is Barbara Tomlin.
Good evening. Thanks for listening. My name is Barbara Thoman and I live at Mobile Country Club. I've been there about two years. My rent, when I first moved in, was $664. And starting in December, it's going to be seven, I believe, $795. That's almost $800 a month. I am on a fixed income. I do have a retirement. I do have, I'm on social security. My son lives with me. He got diagnosed about four years with autism. He has no income, so I'm taking care of him. If it keeps going up, $50 every month, I don't, where am I going to go? What can I do? If you guys can help us, it'd be pretty awesome. I got to say Rancho Cordova reputation wasn't so good when I moved in. I didn't think much of it. I love it. You have a pop team, the Rancho Cordova Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, they got our backs. In Mobile Country Club, we've gotten rid of two druggies and we're getting rid of more. And we need your help. We're a real good community. A lot of them, they stay housebound, they are housebound, but we need, we need help and that's why we're all here. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Next speaker is Helen Fredericks.
Good evening. I'm Helen Fredericks. I live in Mobile Country Club. My husband's a veteran. I'm with the HOA and we did do a new survey. We just put it out two weeks ago. We've only gotten 60 responses, but of that 60 responses, 10% of the responses are paying less than 30% of their income for rent and utilities. 40% are paying over 30% and 50% are paying over 50% of their income. I know you guys like statistics, but I wanted to give you some of the comments that we got on the surveys. One was, "My plan when moving to Mobile Country Club was to buy a home outright so that I could pay lot space rent from my social security and retirement. 10 days after moving in, I received a notice of a $70 increase. The increases are going up faster than my income, which may force me to move out and not in the too distant future." One comment was, "We use rainwater to flush toilets to lower the water bill. We wait until the house is 80-plus degrees to turn on AC and we sit under coverlets to use less heat." My only, this is another one, "My only income is social security. Since taking it 10 years ago, I've had to take approximately $500 out of my savings every month to pay bills. Now my savings is almost gone. Once it is gone, what will I do? I have no IRA, no 401K, just what I saved during my working years. I haven't bought clothes in years and have no, spent money on no extras. I utilize the food bank and live minimally." And one was, "When I moved in 13 years ago, the rent included water and garbage. Now 100% of my income goes to rent and utilities." We have a lady over here that has lived in the Mobile Home Park for 30 years and she is now looking by next year having to move out. My husband and I, if we don't get some kind of control on the high rent raises, we're going to have to look out of state and we've lived here all our lives. So we're really thanking you for your service and asking you to please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
That's all the public comment cards I have.
Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Come on up and then fill out a card, please, and turn that in.
Lucy, you can go ahead. Next speaker is going to be Lucy Brown.
Hello. My name is Lucy Brown and I join with the people who are talking about being on just social security and using their savings. And my social security comes to about $8,000 a year. And if I live about the same time as my family, I'll have eight more years if it goes up for, well, $50 a month for eight years is $4,000 or something a year. Okay, so what I am going to talk about is that a few years ago, the rumor is a group of professionals invested $10 million to purchase Mobile Country Club, according to rumor. That's the rumor that went around. There are 485 units in Mobile Country Club. The December rent is going to be raised to $699 a month. That's $339,015 monthly. That adds up to $4,680 a month. No garbage expense for them because they bill us separately from this $699. So no garbage, no storm drain, no water, no sewer, no expense. Okay, that's, that's what is covered by the group that purchased the company. So $4,680,000 a year for a $10 million investment, that's like a reverse Ponzi scheme. I mean, I would like to find out how I could invest in something like that. And they have a solar in the clubhouse and so there's no expense for the water in the pool, there's no expense for the electricity. And then they rent out the club on weekends to private parties. So I'm saying they're doing really well and I think that our proud leader has mentioned also what has happened as far financially as what's happening at our club. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Next speaker will be Ed McCarthy.
Hello. My name is Ed McCarthy. I live in Mather and I work in near Folsom. So I'm always going up and down sunrise, excuse me, up and down Zinfandel Road. And I was wondering if there was more detail about the overall improvement to the Zinfandel Overpass, to Highway 50. And one of the primary concerns I have is that prior to the work that's starting, the right-hand lane in the northbound, so if you're heading northbound on Zinfandel approaching the overpass, that people always change lanes in the middle of the intersection. And so I'm looking at it now and it looks like the bridge is getting wider, but I'm wondering if there are going to be improvements to Zinfandel south of White Rock Road, particularly in the northbound direction, to help deal with this. It creates, it creates problems for people who are trying to follow the law and not overrun the white line. And then you have people who are supposed to have the right of way to make a right on red. But yet now, even during construction, what happens is people are going over two lanes because of the redirect with the new lane that's been added. And so I'm looking at what's the final product going to be and how's that going to look? On your website, the schematics and the details are very vague. It just has a little red line of the zone that's going to be improved, but no real detail or information.
There's a guy sitting right there with a tie on that could tell you everything you want to know, probably a bunch of stuff you didn't want to know.
Yeah, is there a place that that information is available? Or is he going to discuss that? Or is that something? Because I looked on your agenda, I didn't see it and that's why I...
Yeah, no, we, well, if somebody else, we had multiple workshops about it. It's not on the agenda tonight, but he could inform us.
Sure, and I realize I'm late to the party, the work is going on, but we're all busy.
Yeah, it was voted on like nine months ago.
It's okay, just go talk to Albert.
Yeah, I would talk to him right there.
Talk to Albert, he's our public works director.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joanne French.
Hi. I'm from Mobile Country Club also and I just wanted to clarify, my math is a little different from what I've been hearing. They say the rent's going up to $795, but years ago, our rent used to include garbage, sewer, and storm, about $70. That's no longer included, so it's really 800 and something, 71 plus 795. It's over 800 because that's not an option, it's an add-on to the rent. It's really the full rent. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joanne.
That's all the speaker cards I have.
Okay. Is there anyone else that hasn't had a chance to speak yet and would like to come up right now?
On your website, the schematics and the details are very vague. It just has a little red line of the zone that's going to be improved, but no real detail or information.
There's a guy sitting right there with a tie on that could tell you everything you want to know, probably a bunch of stuff you didn't want to know.
Yeah. Is there a place that that information is available? Or is he going to discuss that? Or is that something? Because I looked on your agenda, I didn't see it, and that's why I'm...
Yeah, no, we've, well, if somebody else, we had multiple workshops about it. It's not on the agenda tonight, but he could...
Sure. And I realize I'm late to the party, the work is going on.
Yeah.
But we're all busy.
It was voted on like nine months ago.
It's okay. Just go talk to Albert.
Yeah, I would talk to him right there.
Talk to Albert. He's our Public Works Director.
Thank you. Next speaker is Joanne French.
Hi. I'm, I'm from Mobile Country Club also. And I just wanted to clarify, my math is a little different from what I've been hearing. They say the rent's going up to $795. But years ago, our rent used to include garbage, sewer, and storm, about $70. That's no longer included. So it's really 800 and something, 71 plus 795. It's, it's over 800. Because that's not an option. It's, it's an add-on to the rent. It's really the full rent. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joanne.
That's all the speaker cards I have.
Okay. Is there anyone else that hasn't had a chance to speak yet and would like to come up right now? I want to thank all of you from, for coming tonight. I know you've been, a lot of you are living in there for a long time. I know we've been there, I think it was built in 1971, something like that. Anyway, I'm glad you're here. You can come and talk to us after this council meeting, talk to our staff. We will do whatever we can, but right now, there's nothing we can do. It's not on the agenda, so there's nothing we can do on it. But thank you for coming and give us more information. That would be very happy, be happy to get that. Thank you. Okay, on to our council reports. Donald.
I'll keep it pretty brief. Air District is this week. I think really the only thing I would comment on was I had the opportunity to moderate my third or fourth town hall for Congressman Bera here at City Hall. Lot of questions about what's going on in DC. Makes me very thankful that I don't work there and have no intention of working there. But a lot of people came with some very pointed questions about the President, sure, but really about disaster relief, fire insurance, and a lot of other things that are really, I think, big struggles for, for our communities in general. Maybe not necessarily in Rancho, but in the general vicinity that could really drive some, some, some big problems in the future. But it was a packed house where they completely packed the American River Room. People were there almost an hour and a half early, just so that they could get a seat. And we didn't open the doors until 30 minutes early, so there were a lot of people in our lobby for a while. But, you know, it was civic participation at its best. But that's pretty much it. And Air District, again, is on Thursday, so maybe more next time.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to what I should have done on the presentations. We have a recognition this evening of a council member, Garrett Gatewood. His birthday is October the 23rd.
You know, he was hoping you were just going to forget.
Well, yeah, I know, but... So I think we're going to ask if anyone in the audience wishes to join us in happy birthday to Garrett. I'm going to lead the song on...
Okay, now that he asked it, Price gets to lead us in song. I'm still the youngest on this council.
One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Garrett. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, everybody, especially Price. Great hearing your wonderful singing voice.
Didn't want to miss this, just couldn't... Linda, council report, please.
Okay. Well, I would, I really, I'd like to take the opportunity to simply congratulate Warren Smith and Joe Wagoner and Greg Van Dusen and all the people who've worked for decades to bring Major League Soccer to the region. This is really something that, that's worth celebrating. And there's a huge party going on downtown and considering the fact that there's been a lot of impact to the freeway today, regional transit is free. And so everybody should be taking the train downtown. But we do want to extend congratulations to them. I attended, David participated, and I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association Hall of Fame, which is an absolutely astounding, satisfying, very exemplary event that happens every year now. This is the fifth or sixth year. I always take grandkids for the inspiration. Ken Rudolph came up from Southern California, former Cordova grad, to, to moderate it. And they, they, they gave an award to the entire football team of 1985 under Max Miller's coaching for their incredible accomplishments that year. Some of us went to the fifth anniversary celebration for Sunset Senior Living. And I took a resolution to congratulate them on having been the first organization in modern-day Rancho Cordova to try to create a really nice living experience for seniors so that they don't have to leave their home communities where they have been for years and years and years. And, and given them just a wonderful social opportunity, made sure that they stay in good health, made sure they have socialization, and, like I said, provide them a place to live here close to home where all their friends are. And then Friday on Community Council, former Sheriff John McGinnis, now KFBK radio personality, came and spoke. And it was a very lively experience, and he even got some pushback from somebody who probably attended Congressman Bera's town hall. But God bless John. He's never afraid to say exactly what he thinks and call it like it is. And we all thoroughly enjoyed it. And then I would like to close in memory of a gentleman, Don McMurci. Don McMurci was the attorney for the Park District for at least 30 and maybe 40 years when I first got elected in '78. He's one of the first people I met who taught us what it meant to be an elected official, the difference between policy, how the fiduciary responsibilities that all elected officials carry. Don McMurci was just absolutely wonderful. And when he retired, probably 10 or maybe 15 years ago, his son Dave took over for a while. And my sympathies to the entire family. And I just think it's really important that we, this gentleman was a veteran of the Army Air Corps, served in the Pacific during World War II. So we'll be offering to do a brick for him and just send our sympathies to his family. One of the wonderful people who helped to make Rancho Cordova what it is today. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Garrett.
Once again, thank you, everybody, for all the birthday little wishes. I am still the youngest member on council. Youngest looking. I'm sorry, youngest looking.
Not if we're counting, you know, actual time.
Youngest looking. I apologize. That's right. Just got back from California League of Cities. It's amazing what, when you go down there and you compare us to what our city's doing compared to other cities. The awards they were giving out, I swear Rancho is doing all of them, all at the same time. And it's funny, sitting next to your city manager, as you point and be like, "We did that. We're doing that, too. We're doing that, too." And so we really are on the cutting edge when it comes to a very vibrant and kind of, you know, involved city. So I'm happy to represent us. Got to meet with, about the Cassis property. That's the one with the old white peach trees that aren't, and that's going to be an amazing piece of property. It happens to be our gem because it's property that's hidden on the river, and it's our last piece of property that touches the river. So I can't wait to see what comes out of that. Congratulations to all the people that are now in the Rancho Cordova Sports Hall of Fame. Hopefully, my son will be able to join. And also, I went and met with the STA Governing Board. My job is to try to get money out of them for White Rock Road. That is coming along nicely. So thank you to Albert and Cyrus for really digging in and helping me find new monies to help improve our roads. We're really looking at focusing on White Rock Road because I really feel that is the thoroughfare for our entire city. And that's my report.
Thank you. We'll have a couple of things. The first one, I think some of you may have been able to go to the Symphony de Oro that was done by the Cordova Light Orchestra at the Corianna Plaza. Now, the way they have that set up is just wonderful. I know the people there at the Corianna Plaza put in an awful lot of time setting things up so the light orchestra can perform there. But they were just fantastic. They went from music from the, from the movie Fantasia, from the, well, just different movies, anyway. A lot of the music was performed like it was heard as if we were in the Boston Pops or something like that. Those people are so good, and it's so enjoyable to listen to them there. And they enjoy coming because they know that the people in Rancho Cordova are going to be there and are going to welcome them there. Every seat was there was full, and people were coming through the store and stopping and looking and listening, and it was just fantastic. So it was just one of those things that was so enjoyable. And they're going to be, they have another, I think, November the 9th. I believe that's going to be at the theater, at the Cordova High School. I'll have to look at that to make sure about the date on that. And another, I'm going to ask our Rancho Cordova School Resource Officer Tracy Jacobs to come up. I have a proclamation for her.
Proclamation, given in recognition of life-saving act for a Cordova High School student, Rancho Cordova School Resource Officer Tracy Jacobs. Whereas on Thursday, August 29th, 2019, at approximately 10:20 a.m., School Resource Officer Tracy Jacobs was at Cordova High School and heard on her radio that fire department personnel were responding to a report of an unresponsive student in the classroom. And whereas, without knowing any details behind their situation, she headed to the classroom to assist. When she arrived, Officer Jacobs saw a student lying on the floor and two school students responding with cardiopulmonary resuscitation. And whereas Officer Jacobs assumed responsibility for administering CPR and continued CPR for a few minutes while one of the nurses utilized the automated external defibrillator in the end. Whereas paramedics arrived, they indicated Officer Jacobs was doing such a good job that he asked her to continue CPR. This provided the paramedics for an opportunity to set up the LUCY CPR device and hook the student up for, to the device. Later, they transported the student to the hospital where he, after several days, he recovered. Both the doctor of the hospital and the paramedic on scene stated the convivial efforts of everyone involved played a key role in the student surviving. A second paramedic indicated that the student did not have a pulse when they arrived and that thanks to the quick actions of Officer Jacobs and the school nurses, he survived. And just one example of how illustrated Officer Jacobs committed to the students and staff at Cordova High School. At this moment, she handled herself in a manner that embodies the vision, mission, and value of the Sacramento Sheriff's Office, the Rancho Cordova Police Department, and the city of Rancho Cordova. And now therefore being resolved, the City Council of the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby honor School Resource Officer Tracy Jacobs for helping to save a student's life. Encourage us all to participate in honoring the spirit of this celebration and important event of the history of our city and its social vitality. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Rancho Cordova to be a fixed 51st day of October 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
I think there are a few things you want to say.
Did my godfather come?
Yes.
You don't like the mangels. Just kidding.
I know.
She likes it down low. If anyone's on many photo trips.
Okay, I think there's some others that would like to say some things to them. I wonder if you had a film. One minute.
I'd just like to say, of course, the other mayor, just Tracy has joined our team on SRO just over a year ago, right? And took some persuading for her to take this job on, but she has been a natural when it comes to being a school resource officer. We're very lucky to have her in Rancho Cordova, and thank you for all you do, Tracy.
Absolutely.
Good little guy, Jim Crow. Yeah. Thanks, Paul.
Do you see Kate behind you? Can you fly? First time.
Are you saving everybody?
Oh, so much. Very good.
I was just wondering, I know you're sitting down, but is there anything you'd like to say to this?
Well, I just want to say...
It's on TV. You got to come to the mics. The people at home are going to want to, are going to want to see this.
Yeah. All the students are going to be looking for you on the TV anyway, so you might as well be there, right?
I just want to say thank you for all of your guys' support. You guys have been so awesome and good to me and supportive of what I do, especially with what I do at my corner every single morning. You guys are supportive, and I appreciate that. And I think it was nothing but God that had me on that campus on that day. God put all the pieces where they needed to be for that kid, so thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And that was wonderful. Now we have our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of words that I wanted to say about Officer Jacobs. She, I think Councilmember Budge mentioned that she's a natural. I think she's more than a natural. She has truly somebody who has true love and passion for the students that she serves in this community. There is mutual love. I have been there. I have seen how the students do at different age groups, different backgrounds, how immediately they connect with her and how comfortable they are with Tracy. I'm also glad that she was able to teach me her, one of her special handshakes and...
We need a demonstration.
At different occasions, I do show off, and it's, it's wonderful. So thank you, thank you, Tracy, for all you've done for us. This is a wonderful addition to our team, and we are very proud of you. The only other item I wanted to point out, council, that I'm excited to share with you and the community, that we have an ice rink coming to Rancho Cordova for this Christmas holiday. So the, some details are still being finalized, but to let you know that it will be at the Corianna Plaza, the plaza, the parking lot area. It's one of the largest, if not the largest, ice rink in this region for this season. So you all come. It would be very exciting. More information will be coming out. We will be, we hope to have a formal ribbon-cutting opening a few days before Thanksgiving. So we will have that information come out fairly soon.
But we're not moving the tree lighting ceremony there or anything, right?
No.
At different occasions, I do show off, and it's wonderful. So, thank you, thank you, Tracy, for all you've done for us. This is a wonderful addition to our team, and we are very proud of you. The only other item I wanted to point out, council, that I'm excited to share with you and the community, that we have an ice rink coming to Ranch Cordova for this Christmas holiday. So, some details are still being finalized, but to let you know that it will be at the Coriana Plaza, the plaza, the parking lot area. It's one of the largest, if not the largest, ice rink in this region for this season. So, you all come. It would be very exciting. More information will be coming out. We will be, we hope to have a formal ribbon-cutting opening a few days before Thanksgiving, so we will have that information come out fairly soon.
But we're not moving the tree lighting ceremony there or anything, right?
No, at this point, this is just, say, a major ice rink, and we are calling it the All-American City Ice Rink.
You're just gonna keep milking that for as long as we can, huh? Nice.
Yeah, we had an ice rink once before when we had the city, yeah, cities' Christmas tree that time. But this one, I think, having it at the park with the tree and then having the ice rink there by the Coriana Plaza is gonna be two wonderful places rather than having it all condensed in one. But that'll be great, because I know there at the park is gonna be the ride for the kids and all kinds of things going on in that, so that's gonna be great. Okay. Thank you, everyone, on this. Okay, the consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matter deemed routine and uncontroversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items, council, which is to pull?
Seeing none, I will move approval of consent calendar items 9.1 through 9.7, with the comment that, "Thank you very much, Albert. We are finally going to redo Matherfield Road." Amazing. This is terrific. So, thank you very much.
Second. And thank you, too.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Roll call on this.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander is absent. Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, then on to item number 10. Consent public hearing items consist of matter deemed routine and uncontroversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items, council, which is to pull?
Seeing none, I will move approval of consent calendar items 9.1 through 9.7, with the comment that, "Thank you very much, Albert. We are finally going to redo Matherfield Road." Amazing. This is terrific. So, thank you very much.
Second. And thank you, too.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Roll call on this.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander is absent. Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, then on to item number 10. Consent public hearing items consist of matter deemed routine and uncontroversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Now, I'm going to open this to public hearing and ask the city clerk if we have any speaker cards for the public hearing items.
I have a speaker card for 10.1, Joyce Rosenberg.
Actually, I'd like to pull this item and ask you a couple of questions. So, you know, we can go ahead and hear from Joyce now or when we talk about the item.
As I said, do we have to, if we have a comment, we have to pull it. Because we can't, we can't move it on the calendar.
Perhaps you would proceed with adoption of item 10.2, and then you can double back and open up the item on 10.1?
So, if we call 10.2, and Bob opens the public hearing on that one, then I'd be happy to move approval.
Second.
Okay, I have 10.2.
Hold on just a moment, we'll get back to the other, okay?
Don't go far.
10.1 has been pulled. We will come back to that in a moment. I have 10.2, it says a motion and a second, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander is absent. Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to 10.1.
And if I could, just a quick congratulations to our partner Elliot Holmes and Elizabeth Sparkman and Cyrus Abbar for item 10.2 is another important milestone in that project.
And thanks for singing, Price.
Birthday price.
So, you want to read, you want to read in 10.1?
I can. 10.1. Grantline 208, Lennar Homes, major design review amendment, project number DD 9883, located south of Douglas Road and west of Grantline Road.
So, I wanted to ask if you would explain the thing about the two-foot offset. I didn't quite get that.
Sure. Nick Sosa, Associate Planner, City Ranch Cordova. The two-foot offset that we've required before was for two adjacent homes so that, say, for example, if one home is at a minimum of 16-foot setback, the next home would either have to, would have to be at 18. And then after that 18, the home next door was at 18, then they would have to be, the next door would be at a 16. So, it's just to give dimension of the homes for a streetscape.
Okay, so it's not a, simply because we, when we first began building in that area, we discovered that people were trying to crowd too large a house on too small a lot, and we had some places where you couldn't get between the chimney and the, and the side fence.
The villas.
So, I just was trying to make sure it wasn't a side yard setback. So, you're just looking for articulation along the street.
Exactly. That's what the original intent of the two-foot offset was. With Grantline 208, they are requesting to remove that offset just because it's been difficult to move the homes back and forth on the lots. And Lennar, as well as staff, believes that there's enough articulation and architectural styles within these subdivision that it should be, still have some articulation and facade interest.
Okay. And frankly, I'm looking at the little graphic, figure seven on page five of eight, and it really kind of looks like they're all exactly the same. I mean, seriously, it looks like the garages are all set at exactly the same, or the leading edge of the house is all set is exactly same distance from the, from the back of walk, even with the single-story plan. So, I'm not sure I agree with that, but I'm not sure it's important, except for, you know what I'm noticing, Nick? We've always had a requirement for staying away from what's called snout houses, where the garage is the leading edge of the house. And the plan on the right side, which, whose number I cannot read...
I believe that's...
Leads with its garage, and the, and the front door is set way back.
So, in our design standards, we do allow for one, if there's four different floor plans, we do allow for one to be garage-forward as long as the other ones are living space-forwards. So, that's part of our design standards.
Okay, so, I would ask RCPD if these houses went through a SEPTED analysis?
I'm not sure of that, but I can check into that.
Okay, so, Chief Pittman is not sure, but one of the purposes of SEPTED is to make sure that when we have a house whose front door is not necessarily visible from the street, that there's no opportunity for people to hide back there and surprise a homeowner in the dark.
So...
And I would probably love to hear what Lennar has to say about it.
So, just to speak to that, the, the original Grantline 208 project was routed to the police department, and we did receive comments for their first submittal back when the original approval was completed. And they do have some conditions of approval in there as part of the packet. And number 30 would be the Ranch Cordova Police Department requirements.
Okay. And I didn't print that out. Sorry. So, maybe Lennar could speak to it?
Thank you.
Good evening. Sean McDermid, representing Lennar Homes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We are in full support with the staff report and conditions of approval. I'll speak to a couple of items brought up by Councilmember Budge as it relates to the desire for the request for the modification to the condition related to the setbacks. Lennar feels that in this community, we've provided for a total of 13 floor plans, as is outlined in the staff report, that provides a number of different living configurations as well as articulation towards the street. In the modification that's being requested here tonight, we have a total of four floor plans. Two of those include living forward designs, that's the living area forward. One of them includes a porch and living area forward design. And then the last one is the more garage-forward design that was discussed. From our standpoint, given the variety of the floor plans and how they're oriented towards the street, we believe that we have provided for that articulation that was the intent of that condition, and therefore, that's why we requested that modification to the conditions.
Are any of these next-gen homes?
I do not believe that any of these are next-gen homes.
I know you've built us a lot of next-gen homes, which is really nice.
Yes, we have. None of these are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, when we have, go back to public comment then, and come up. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, city council members. I apparently made the mistake of thinking that the two-foot offset meant house, two feet spence, two feet house. I apologize, but we've gone through that issue before, and we couldn't get the garbage cans behind the house, and so that was what raised my ire. Thank you very much.
Welcome to the crowd.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm glad I wasn't the only one, Linda. Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak on this item? You have the cards?
I do not.
Okay, then I'm gonna close with public comment. Does anyone wish to make a motion on this?
I will move approval of item 10.2.
Second.
Introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay, then roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander is absent. Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the, the item for Grantline 208 is 10.1, I believe.
Oh, sorry, you're right. You're right. 10.1. Thank you, Nick.
Mm-hmm.
You, too, Bob.
That's right. You mean, I made a mistake? Well, that's once for this year, okay? Okay, regular calendar items, 12.1. Would you read the subject, please?
Yes. Staff presentation of proposed updated five-year pavement rehabilitation plan.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey and council members. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department, and I'm going to provide a brief update to the five-year pavement plan. The staff presented a recommended prioritization to council on August 19th, and at the time of that meeting, staff, or council directed staff to identify opportunities to advance work on Matherfield Road and Aramon Drive to 2020. So, this evening, I will provide a very brief background and provide the updated proposed five-year pavement plan for council consideration and direction. The pavement condition index in City of Rancho Cordova is 69, which is the high-end of fair, and exceeds the statewide average of 65. But that doesn't tell the entire story, because over half of our roads are in good condition, but almost 20% of our roads are in poor and failed condition. And that's important to understand, because the better roads are easier to maintain, and the poorer roads are more expensive to maintain. The current conditions of Rancho Cordova to maintain a pavement condition index of 69 over the next 10 years is about $80 million. And the City of Rancho Cordova has been extremely successful in obtaining grants that augment our ongoing funding streams. And so, that puts us at a shortfall of between $5 million and $40 million over the course of the next 10 years, depending on how successful we are in obtaining grant funds. If we were to increase the funding, increase our pavement condition index to 80 over the course of the next 10 years, that's approximately $140 million, and that's a shortfall of about $65 to $100 million to increase to a pavement condition index of 80. And 80 is a, is a goal, because that is the most efficient place to maintain our pavement. The City of Rancho Cordova has made a significant investment into both residential and arterial roads within the city, and has made great progress in both of those fronts. And highlighted in blue are the residential locations where major rehabilitations have already occurred. So, for the proposed updated five-year plan, in 2020, we're proposing to rehabilitate Sunrise Boulevard, generally between White Rock Road and Folsom Boulevard. Also, in 2020, towards the latter end of the year, Matherfield Road, generally from Folsom Boulevard down to International. And then we would begin in rehabilitation of residential roads, starting in the Cordova Vineyards neighborhood. Because of the magnitude of the work there, it would be a three-year project, starting in the latter part of 2020, and then continuing in '21, and finally, 2022, to complete that. And Aramon Drive would be included in the first phase of that work. Then, in 2023 and '24, the project and plan would continue within the Mills Ranch community. And so, therefore, staff recommends that as the proposed five-year plan, and I would appreciate any thoughts, comments, and direction from city council.
Okay, council, have any requests, comments?
Yeah, just a, just a question. So, so as was emphasized, you're, with Cordova Vineyards, you're doing the entire neighborhood. So, when, when we elevate something like Aramon or the section of McGregor from Folsom Boulevard to Zinfandel, to, to a more current year, how do you, how do you then schedule going back and repaving the feeder streets to that main arterial?
Thank you. There, there are many approaches to addressing a residential neighborhood, and in some cases, it is, it could be focused on arterials first, the, the major collectors that go through the neighborhood. In some cases, it may be more efficient to do one section and then another. As we dive into the design of this project, we can return to council with the proposed detailed plan of how we intend to take care of that neighborhood. But those are a couple of the ways that it's typically addressed.
Well, and I, I think we all understand the, the logic and the necessity of responding to traffic counts, where there's more traffic, obviously, there's more pressure on the road, and, and they need to be taken care of more often than, than of just a, the road that goes in front of somebody's house. But the road that goes in front of somebody's house is the one they look at every day, the one the kids are trying to bicycle on or roller skate on, if anybody roller skates anymore, and, and that kind of thing, you know, so...
It shouldn't be in the street.
Skateboard's on, then. Okay. Thank you, Albert.
Thank you.
So, remind me, because when we talked about this last time, we had said that we want to prioritize the local roads over the arterial work. But I know I kept saying, but if it jeopardized some other grant, then we had to do, is that what happened with Sunrise and Mather, was we had funding that had to be used in a certain window?
With, with Sunrise Boulevard, we've made commitments to the Sacramento Transportation Authority and expenditure of Measure A dollars.
Okay.
And so, that is why we're continuing forward with Sunrise Boulevard. But we were able to simultaneously move forward, move forward Matherfield Road and the residential per the council direction. So, we'll be doing all of those.
Okay. Thanks.
Garrett, do you have any questions?
No.
I was gonna ask about the same question about the side streets, but I think you did that very well. I know there's, when we were working on some of the side streets, my sons oaked in way. It was very light, and you put the gravel over on top, I mean, the asphalt on top of it, and there were some leftover little pieces of, that, on the, on the streets, and it was on the sidewalks and like that. So, whoever does that, I want them to be careful in what they're doing, so they don't just leave things like that to go forever, it seems like, until it finally was picked up. So, that's all I can think of, is just I want the people who are doing the work... the people who are doing the work to be careful on what they're doing rather than leaving pieces left, because they really can make a mess on vehicles and on bicycles and everything else in the neighborhoods.
So this is just receive and file?
No, we need to take a motion, don't we?
I don't think so, but we've got speaker cards.
All righty.
We don't have to approve the plan?
We have some speaker cards on this. Stacy?
I'm still, a point where I'm confused. This isn't an action item that we need to approve the plan?
I don't, I'll defer to, I'll defer to Mr. Lindgren, but I don't believe that a specific action is needed unless you want to change to the plan. Staff will be proceeding with this direction and any modifications provided by council.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, it says receive staff presentation under recommendation.
Interesting, okay. All right.
I'm going to, any public comments? Yes, and cards, please.
Yes, I had one resident present some public comment today, which I have provided to the City Council at the dais, and there is a copy of her comments in the back of the room. In addition to that, I have two speaker cards. The first speaker is Joyce Rosenberg. Following Joyce will be Court.
Me again, I'm sorry. Thank you again for hearing me. I just want to ask you to please keep Cordova Vineyards way up there on your list. There are so many streets there that are 42, 38. They're just in terrible condition, so please, please don't let that one fall back behind anybody. Huh?
Vineyards.
Say you said Vineyard. You said Vineyard, right?
I said Cordova Vineyards.
Yeah, okay, so that's first.
I see that. What I'm saying is I wanted to stay first. I don't want somebody else getting, edging these people out because while, yes, it costs more because the streets are in terrible shape, so yes, that costs more, but they're not going to get any better and it'll only cost more, so please don't let anybody else change this. Is it written in cement once you approve this?
This is it, you're done.
He bought the cement.
This is it.
Asphalt.
I just need to have faith in government. It's been shaken lately. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Next?
The second speaker is Court Droppful. Is that close? Sorry.
Don't get that one. Anyway, Mayor McGarvey, City Council, you guys almost took the wind out of my sails there, saying you're going to get to Aramont Road, thank you very much, and that's going to be next year, right? Do we have any idea how much it costs to fill potholes? You know, Aramont Drive has been four decades old. According to our estimate of how long asphalt lasts, it's already two decades past its original lifespan, so all we've done is fill potholes. The other thing we haven't done, which would be very helpful, would be to re-stripe Folsom. You can't see where the stop signs are or the marks are because there's so many, they've been filled with potholes so much, and maybe it doesn't make a difference, but all the cars apparently don't recognize it as being a stop sign because they go through it. Some have to think about it because they kind of slow down and take a quick look, and boom, right through. I spend a lot of my day, every time I'm out there yelling, every, excuse me, every person that is violating the law in front of my house, I go out and yell at them, ask them if the brakes not working, you know, and they're yelling back, and I got a GoPro now, I'm going to mount it out there, just, I don't know, maybe, Paul, we should, we should work on that, you know? Put live cam out there, maybe, is that easier? Can we do that and actually kick at people or turn it in, or what about the idea, I'll just put a live cam up, Rancho Cordova at Aramont, and everybody get a hell of a laugh out of all the cars that'll come through there at times 40 or 50 mile an hour. Is that, what do we think about that possibility? I mean, I'm serious, this is not a joke. What about just live cameras, they don't cost much, to put up at the stop signs and put, and let you watch all your neighbors go through the stop sign all the time? It might encourage somebody when they start seeing herself and they seeing their neighbors on there to quit running the sign. I don't know what else to do. I've offered to, you know, paintball the cars so you'd recognize them after they went through. That didn't get a good reception. Chris, thank you. Anyway, I'm glad you're going to finally fix the street. I don't believe that filling potholes for 10 years is cost-effective. I would be really interested to know what the total cost has been in the last, we'll make it easy, five years for filling potholes in our area, not just whatever Rancho, whatever Rancho Cordova is responsible for. What is the total cost of filling potholes every year, and how much does that take away? And not only the potholes, but when you turn right off of Folsom Boulevard on Aramont, there's a big sinkhole about this wide and about that long that you got to slow down for.
Please wrap up your comments.
Five seconds? Six? Oh, I'm over time. Oh, sorry. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Glad you're getting on the Aramont. At least put a stripe in it.
Thank you.
And just for the record, when we authorize him to use paintballs on cars that don't stop at stop signs, I'd like to be notified of that, either for observational purposes or perhaps participation.
I would caution anybody about waving guns at cars.
You have that sign that starts with an S, you think it's a stop instead of slow?
Right after I retire.
Why is our lawyer panicking again?
I'm more concerned about the guys that work for the chief.
Any other cards?
No.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, then. We are going to ask staff to go forward on this unless there's something else that someone wishes to do on this. Just go forward as is?
I'd just make the comment, I apologize for not being here for the beginning of this item, but make the comment that we as a city need to examine the cost of not keeping our pavement condition index up at 80 for everything in the city, and ideally find a way to get us to that position, figure out what it would cost, how long it would take, so that we're spending the least amount of money annually on maintenance compared to the greater amount we would need to spend now to maintain a system that has a PCI of less than an optimal rate.
I don't like the effect of my automobile.
And this is, you know, this is a discussion we've had at SECAG, the whole fix-it-first idea of how much are we wasting as a region because our road facilities are not in good shape, and then when you have to fix them up, you spend way too much than if you just kept them in good condition to begin with. So basically, it's a huge inefficiency in the maintenance of our infrastructure, and we as a city, I think, might have an opportunity to try to rectify that, but we have to at least come up with, how many dollars is it going to take, over what timeframe, what does that look like, how could we achieve that? So that's a question I think we need to ask ourselves.
All righty. Thank you, David. Okay, then on to item 12.2, ask the city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Presentation on the Sunrise Boulevard Rehabilitation Project.
Staff?
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey and Councilmembers. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department, and Sunrise Boulevard is one of the most, the heaviest-traveled arterials in the entire region, and one of the challenges is we have a wonderful bicycle network, bicycle network system from the Folsom South Canal, but there's a significant gap between there and connecting up to the American River Bike Way, and so this evening Edgar Medina will be presenting to you a project update and ask for council input, and I'll hand it over to Edgar Medina.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Director Stricker. Mayor McGarvey, Councilmembers, pleasure to be back to present on this item. As Director mentioned, this is kind of dovetailing to the previous presentation with regard to the five-year plan, so we are looking to provide just a project update and then ultimately receive council input on the project in of itself. Just a little bit of background, we have, the project limits start at Folsom, sorry, White Rock Road, and go all the way up to Folsom Boulevard along Sunrise Boulevard. There's two components to this, not only Sunrise, but the project is going to include a portion of Citrus Road, which is going to establish that connection that Director mentioned from the Folsom South Canal to not only other trail systems, but also the RT Light Rail Station. So the area highlighted in yellow is going to be part of this project and is currently incorporated into the design. So in total, we have approximately 1.4 miles, 70 miles of total improvements. As mentioned before, Sunrise Boulevard is going to, limits is from White Rock Road to Folsom Boulevard, and Citrus Road is from the intersection at Sunrise Boulevard to the Trade Center, thus making that connection to the Light Rail Station. So existing conditions on Sunrise Boulevard, we're all very familiar with it, I'm sure. It's a six-lane road with a center turn lane. In some cases, there is a median there. As mentioned previously, we don't have any bike facilities on Sunrise, which this project is going to establish a connection to some of the trail amenities. Below on the existing additions is just some photos of our current limitations out there. So the proposed improvements, as mentioned, is we're going to expand the cross-section a little bit on the east side between the Folsom South Canal to Citrus Road, which is ultimately then going to connect into the Light Rail Station. So in of itself, it's primarily a pavement rehabilitation project, but we do have the multi-use path that's going to include a sidewalk widening on the east side. We have multiple, multiple ADA ramps, improvements, traffic signal upgrades to meet our current standards, the bike lane facilities on the, along Citrus that makes the connection to the RT Station as well as to the widened sidewalk. The median and landscaping, we're going to install a new median, which is going to incorporate our standard concrete-colored banding, cobbled hardscaping, ground covers, tree plantings, and primarily, we're going to maintain a lot of the existing trees, except for some of the ones that are in poor health.
That was the part I wanted to know about, because we do have some stretches of very mature trees in there, and I would hate to see the thing denuded and started over again. This is not the Chevron or the Staples.
Very good question, comment. We believe, I believe right now, we only have one tree that's being removed of the existing trees. So our schedule right now is we are at the 90% design stage, which is a perfect opportunity for staff to receive any comments or input from council. We intend to complete the design by the end of this calendar year, looking to advertise for construction over the winter months and get prepared for a spring start of construction, and use spring, summer, and fall for that construction period. Our project estimate and project value is $10.6 million, of which 1.2 is community has-been funds, and then the Measure A 1.3 that Director mentioned as far as our condition of money allocated to this corridor. Right now, we're looking for recommendations from City Council that we could input into our project. Before I solicit any questions, I mean, our next step is to incorporate any comments from council and ultimately move into construction in the spring and be done by hopefully fall of 2020. With that, I open it up for discussion, comments, direction.
So I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate your information about the existing median. It was done, believe it or not, with the thought that we could provide some green space, but also sort of pay homage to the dredger heritage around here, and that's why the big cobbles are out there. Plus, it was an awful lot easier to, than trying to put something in that needed to be watered or maintained. I know we all feel, we all get concerned when we see the guys out there stomping around in the median because the traffic is going so fast. Just make sure they don't step off. But I have a timing question. So at what stage will we be in the reconstruction of Zinfandel when this project kicks off?
Councilmember Budge, good question. So Zinfandel will be done before this project starts. So right now, we're scheduled to be done with, substantially complete with the Zinfandel complex by the first week of February.
Okay, and so what about the utility work at Kilgore and McGregor and a whole bunch of other places like that?
Again, good question. Those items, we're coordinating with some of the, with the other utility companies that are doing that. On top of that, we are coordinating with Folsom 5 improvements, which is going to hopefully be able to fund that last portion of Sunrise between, I mean, Folsom Boulevard between Kilgore and Sunrise. So all these projects, as well as the first phase of White Rock Road, are all being well coordinated in terms of timing. There is going to be a little bit of overlap in terms of some of the scope, but we're, we'll be able to coordinate those.
I thought Folsom 5 was finishing up the last bid from Rod Bodry to Bradshaw.
That's Folsom 4. Well, let me clarify the scope for Folsom 4. So Folsom 4 is from Rod Bodry to Horn, and then Folsom 5, which we currently are receiving bids next week, is from Horn to Bradshaw, and then with an alternative bid from Kilgore to Sunrise.
Okay. I'm not sure we've seen any plans for Kilgore to Sunrise. Am I remembering wrong? Because I'm really surprised. I mean, obviously, there's limitations in there because of the Light Rail overpass and the impact of the right-of-way and the hill and the inability to do much of anything in there because of all that.
It probably has been several years since we presented the section between Kilgore and Sunrise to City Council, and we could certainly bring that back. The intent is similar landscaping and improvements, as you see within the rest of the corridor, but we could certainly bring that back or present that to you directly if you preferred.
Okay. My questions about timing are simply the fact that it seems like everywhere I go, somebody is digging a hole in the road for some reason or another, and they do a bad job of patching it, or they impact the traffic, or they manage to do it at noon, which is the most ridiculous time to work on the intersection of Folsom and Zinfandel, or even the intersection of Kilgore and Folsom Boulevard, just to make sure that not every street in town is torn up at the same time. But congratulations, because Folsom Boulevard right now, if anybody hasn't driven it, they should, looks absolutely gorgeous. All the Chinese Prestige are turning brilliantly red, and it's really a beautiful streetscape. So congratulations, guys.
Very good. How about, anyone else on the council? Doesn't sound like it. Okay. I think we've been going through this then, and I'm looking forward to getting some of these things begun, and this one completed. I know everyone's hoping to get the Zinfandel finished, you said the first week of February. Okay, then my daughter, when she can go to work at Franchise Tax, is looking forward to no longer having any traffic problems there on Folsom Boulevard, all the way up to Bradshaw, and I told her, well, we're going to get done to about where the library is, then we're going to go from library to the, to Bradshaw, and that's going to be another section. She said, you mean, they're going to start on something else? I said, well, yeah, and there's not much you can do about that, but I know you're working with the county on that, and that's, does that make it harder, trying to work with them, or is that something that's been working well?
Mayor McGarvey, it is something that is working well. We have established relationship with the engineering staff over there to move forward with the approval process and have done so, so it's been working very well.
Very good. It's a shame that we don't have some control of the lights at Folsom and Zinfandel and Folsom and Mather, because I know at Zinfandel, I can sit there for five minutes to get, wait to get through going south on Zinfandel, because you have people going north on Zinfandel, and then one of the light rail comes through, and then they get through, and then people on, going north, they start all over again, and then another train will come, and that gets through, and then the people and then people on Zinfandel going north, go through it again. Meanwhile, by going south, you're still sitting there waiting. And that gets very frustrating, when you're trying to get made to be a meeting here, or people are trying to get to work on time. Because it's, I know nothing you can do about it unless, we don't have control of that timing, correct? On, for the lights, and for the arms coming down for the Light Rail, and all that sort of thing.
You're correct. The intersections are significantly impacted by the operations of the Light Rail through there.
The only good thing about it, Bob, the Light Rail trains, Zinfandel is one of those places where they're designated to cross, so they do it all at the same time. One goes through, and another one follows immediately, rather than, you know, every five minutes, somebody comes through. So they're synchronized, the schedule is synchronized, so that it actually minimizes wait time. But you're right. If you're, whether you're westbound on Zinfandel, or southbound on, I mean, westbound on Folsom, or southbound on Zinfandel, it is a wait.
My only comment to that, and this is more constituents than myself these days, the schedule is synchronized. Whether or not they actually show up when they're scheduled is a different issue.
Okay.
It's supposed to work that way.
No, I get your point. Agnes is taking the train to Kasumnas, and I've got this alert on the phone, and the number of times, I truly, I applaud the people who use it for commuting to somewhere, because it can be challenging.
David, you had something?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for pushing ahead on this Sunrise project. And colleagues, we've spent a lot of money on Folsom Boulevard, upgrading Folsom Boulevard as a corridor. It had to be done. I don't think there was any real option there. This is what you have to do with old corridors. But we have other old corridors. Sunrise, I think, may be the most critical one, given what's going on at the south end, and the amount of traffic that is there on Sunrise. But we also ought to think about Coloma, and perhaps Zinfandel, perhaps even Bradshaw, as other corridors in the city that need beautification, need more modern facilities. And so to that extent, I would really encourage staff to look hard at the way grant-making is being done at the state level, with an ever-more reliant focus on impoverished neighborhoods, or neighborhoods that are perhaps close to impoverished, or challenged in some way environmentally, as well as favoring bicycle, you know, facilities along those corridors. If those are avenues that allow us to reinvest at a higher rate, because we're better at getting grants, I think that's something this Council's probably open to, in the big picture. Beyond this idea, though, fixing up the infrastructure, which is the easiest thing for us to do, I think the harder thing for us to do is to fix up those corridors from just almost a beautification level, right? You've got businesses along Folsom Boulevard that are not attractive, and Lyndon, Bob, and I have some experience with the Chamber in doing facade improvements and beautifying properties 20 years ago. That could be done again on Sunrise. It could be done on Coloma. Could be done on Bradshaw. Things that leverage a few public dollars with private investment, and yield a much more attractive community, because that is going to be really important in driving property values and keeping crime down in Ranch Cordova. So I think this is a great first step, but we really ought to consider how we follow that up with true beautification along those corridors.
We also, David, and I would put this under Council request for future agenda items, we need to address an issue that you and I have talked about frequently, and that's real estate signs. The fact that some real estate signs make it look like everything in Ranch Cordova is for sale, when it's not actually. And there are ways we can take care of it. You and I came up with an idea, and there are other options out there. But that needs to be something that we discuss in terms of beautification.
Okay. Anything else on the Council? Then I would say we can have staff go forward with what they have here. And I'm sure that they will listen to anything else that might come up at 2:00 in the morning, but I won't call you if it does. And for right now, I have nothing else. I'm going to adjourn the meeting in memory of Don McMurtry. And then we will close for a closed session.